All right, six o'clock. Welcome in board. Judy, you can take roll.
Yes, sir.
And then number two, we've got swearing Heather Collins, newly elected board member, to seat number two, right?
Yes, that was a typo on my part.
Okay. We'll let it happen again. Where, um, are you? Do we want to picture her?
Yes, yes, I'm gonna take a picture. You swear in and I'll take the picture.
You got a backdrop in mind?
Um, over by the flags is fine.
I was gonna say that, probably be.
Yeah.
Don't give me that look. I'll stand your right. Don't, don't I have something to hand her or...
I was gonna say, you're supposed to like shake hands, is what I've had done in the past.
Well, I thought we did the...
Do that, and then shake her hand.
Yeah.
Do that, and then shake her hand.
Read her rights and then shake her hand.
We do that, right?
Yes.
Haven't done this before. Okay. Raise your right hand. I, Heather Collins, hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform the duties of school board member of Cherokee Public Schools, District 02, IO 46, to the best of my ability, and that I will faithfully discharge all of my duties pertaining to set office and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States of Oklahoma. All right, welcome aboard.
He said, "Albany, and..."
What'd they say?
He said, "Albany."
Judy, you're doing... There you go. Yep.
Then she signs that, and I keep it in my pocket.
Okay. Discussion and vote to reorganize the board officers. So we've got president, vice president, and clerk. What's your thoughts? So right now, I'm president, Desiree's vice president, and we are open on clerk position. I nominate Shane for clerk.
I wouldn't be much good at a clerk, clerk. I'm handwriting is terrible, but I don't think good sentences, but, um... So, are they all open?
No, but we, now's the time to move things around if, if somebody wants to try something. I think, uh, eventually it's a good idea for everybody to kind of be in all positions. Um, but it's kind of, you know, we can do that another year, however anybody sees fit.
Do you have any feelings at all on cases?
I'm not gonna say anything. It's a man, right? If we have backup for... I'm willing for it, though, to do whatever, us to do whatever.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know how your opinion would be. As, I would think in that position that you would do better than I would be. That's just my personal opinion. I listen to you, and whenever, you know, whoever was gone, I'm kind of assumed that role and end up good, but, uh... I am going to nominate you.
Thank you.
How do you feel about that? Are you okay with that, or...
Um, the, the October day, there's, there's some construction, so what we need to do...
Yeah. Well, I think, I think whoever is, is that, we're gonna kind of have to, you know, we've got a lot of, you know, new positions here that, um, you know, we'll just have to, we'll work out. It's not a big deal. We'll help each other. Anybody, uh, we're about for president. Anybody got any thoughts? When I'm okay here, I just don't, you know, I don't wanna just be here, just be here if somebody else. Uh, I think it's good that we rotate eventually, but I'm okay for another year if you guys are okay with it. But it's, you know, I'm, I don't wanna twist anybody's arm, so to speak.
Is it this time every year that you reorganize?
Yeah, it's about this time every year.
Do you have to, can you do it like if you start doing the clerk and you feel like you're not liking that? Can you do it every time?
I think we can revisit, I think we can revisit it. It's usually for at least a year in the past, since I've been on, that's how we've done it. But I think it's something that we, if one or two positions just didn't like whatever we're doing, I think it's something that we could, we could put on another agenda and make some changes if it just wasn't working out. So basically, the, you know, the president's role is to facilitate the meeting. Vice president's role is basically to facilitate the meeting when the president's not there. And then the clerks sign and everything along with the president's position. So those two positions require people to hang out a little longer and, you know, different roles, but... My, uh, my thoughts are, you know, I'm okay with staying where I'm at. Um, I kind of agree a little bit with Shane on, you know, I think you would make a good clerk for now until we get some other people up to speed. And, uh, I don't know, how, how do you feel about vice president, Shane? Uh... Or Curtis, do you have a...
I haven't really thought about that, but, uh... Yeah, uh, you're probably right with rotation, as far as rotation. I just, I don't know, I'm, I'd probably be okay with, with vice president, you know, I think, I think you'd be probably more organized at that, I would more, so...
Well, I think right now, it's just a good opportunity to kind of take a mental note that we do need to pay attention to these other jobs when somebody else is doing it so that we can step into those roles, uh, when it comes fit, because the board does change faces at times, so it's good to be able to kind of bounce around. I, I know I've served with clerk, as clerk before in the past, and, uh, I just do not go back there if I didn't have to, but, um, you know, I'm open to whatever. I would, I think right now, I'd, I'd like to see you as clerk and, you, you as vice president, unless Curtis wants to jump in.
We'll do this.
Any other thoughts on, what's that, Desiree?
First, it's on, all you have to do is just start the meeting, so practice out there.
Any other thoughts? So how I'd like to do this is if I could have a motion of how you guys think we ought to do it, I'd like to just have one motion and name the president, the vice president, and the clerk, and then we'll just do one vote on it, and then one and done. And if we need to change positions as far as who's running this meeting, we'll do it after that motion.
How would somebody word such a motion?
You would just say, "I make a motion to, uh, put so-and-so at the president's position, so-and-so at the vice president's position, and so-and-so at clerk position," and, uh, see if we get a second.
Right off. See, I'll make a motion then to keep Gloria Cordill Hill as president, and then Shane Parker to vice president, who is Desiree Gibson, clerk.
Can we have a motion? Desiree, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin? Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
All right, so your new duties are firm.
Waiting out in this moment.
Yeah, right now, right now. Just got serious. Okay. Number four, approval of consent agenda. All following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have separate vote or or vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of following. And Bryce will just kind of take us through A through F, one at a time.
Hey. Steve, approval of the minutes from our last board meeting. Heather's to choose us now. Gone on, I mean, it's, I think you're still able to vote if you wish to abstain from voting because you weren't here. I think that's possible too, if you want to do it that way, but you have that option. Letter, uh, B. Let's go through the general fund. Purchases first, that'll be, uh, this page here that's got the long list, purchase orders. You on there that I would like to highlight. It's always you does a very good job of detailing which ones are federal program purchases and what those are, but, uh, just a couple things that are not necessarily ordinary. Paul, that'd be Carol, that'd be purchase order 113, $5,500. Those are for, uh, that's our auditor. So those are fees associated with our audits. You'll notice purchase order number 21, Farmers Co-op, $6,258. That's, that's just proof right there that this time of year is very busy and that fuel prices have gone up quite a bit, as you all are aware, I'm not sure, but, um, that's quite a bit more than it usually is, even at this time of the year. And we kind of anticipate that that will be an increase. Going down the list, most of these other utilities are all just about the same. When we get down there to the lower part, Alpha Plus, that's $16,260. Alpha Plus is a formative and summative assessment tool that we've used for several years. We're actually having some conversations on whether we want to continue with that program. It does an excellent job of collecting data, tracking student progress throughout the year, so there's, there's a lot of benefits to it, but it's something that is primarily used at the elementary level right now, and it's reading and math. That is something that, this $16,260 is this school year, so we haven't made that payment or anything for next school year yet. We haven't decided there's, if that's a program that we want to continue with. Speech services, another one, Farmers Co-op. We did put some new tires on one of the buses that we just purchased. So that, $2,472.54, that's for those. Purchase order 53, $3,117.75, 628. That is part of the American Rescue Plan Federal Dollars that is designated specifically for special education. And so, purchase some math, math subscriptions, I believe is what that SUB means. Midwest bus sales, that was the bill. We did have to do some painting on the activity bus that we did purchase. And so that $3,000 is for that, the Midwest bus sales. $19.98, computers. We did purchase some updated hardware for our offices. Most of the stuff that we were using is pretty out of date, and, uh, so we're using 588, which is kind of small rural schools money. And we've kind of held on to that till the end, see if there was some things at the end of the year that we needed, and that was one area that we felt like we could invest in there and purchase some computers for the office, office people. Page 182, down at the bottom, Garage Nationals. 412 is the program number, which was the number that's used for FCCLA. Again, should be going to National Convention, San Diego, later in June. So that $1,800 there is for cost of hotels for her. Most of the other money will come out of activity fund, and that's again, raise cover the cost of that for the students. Again, those are the, kind of the out of the ordinary, one-time expenses, some of our bigger ones. Of course, if there's any questions about any of those others on here, I'm happy to go over those too. We want to move on to the building fund. It's just a couple pages past that, not nearly as long of a list. The only thing really in the building fund is, number 31 was for $1,305.86 to the symptoms. We had some sewer line trouble over at the elementary and had to do some work out here behind the cafeteria, putting some clean outs in and snaking the drains. Kind of some of those things that come up, that's what that's for, and that's our building fund. And then child nutrition. Child nutrition is the last page, and both of those are just our normal monthly payments. The one to the food service company Keystone. And then we did have an annual commodity fee that we had to pay this month. I think that takes care of B. If there's any questions. Not C, activity fund report. Kendra's not able to be here, but, uh, this is, again, it's a busy time of year, so lots of just ins and outs with activity, fund, lots of concession and gate, especially with our track meets, and, uh, hotel rooms for state track meet, meals, those types of things, out of the activity fund. But nothing, nothing out of the ordinary really there. On D, discussion and vote to approve the cash amounts for activity change boxes from $200 to $400. There have been a few times, but it's in our policy right now that that, that fund, activity fund change boxes, whether it be for gate or concession, there's a $200 limit on that, and we run it to a few times where that's just not enough to get it started. So we'd like to increase that from $200 to $400. That would allow her to put more money in there for startup so that there's more change available. A lot of times those activities are late on Friday, and the bank's closed, and we just don't have that ability. So that is what D, and it would be a change in our policy, um, from $200 to $400 on that. E, discussion and vote on treasurer's report. Amanda, the United team, there. Spent all that time looking for it, and I don't remember what I did. Do you know what it's here, though? It's towards the back, so maybe you've already got yours out. Uh, if you look at this, obviously things do look much better, but we still have, still have quite a bit. There has been encumbered that has not come out yet. I think I told you last month, I expected our carryover in our general fund to be somewhere around $500,000, and I still think that's a pretty good projection and could be even a little bit on the low side. So while this, and the monthly balance currently shows a little over 1.1 million, we do in June have to catch up with payroll. There's some other expenses that, that come out that month, so, uh, but like I said, right now, I still feel like that's probably where we're gonna be. A lot of that is due to some of these federal dollars that we've got, paying for property insurance that we use, try to get some financial stability back. I mean, it was, went back on solid ground, and we are headed in the right direction. So those things are good. Building fund. Building funds, okay. I'd like to see it a little bit more than that, but considering some of the things that we've had to do and the amount that we relied on it last year at this time. We were paying utilities out of our building fund last year at this time, rather than general fund. So without doing that this year, hopefully there'll be some opportunity to help catch it back up. Lunch fund is still in good shape. I mean, our sinking fund, root bond funds are not where they need to be. And I'll, I'll have a little bit more to report kind of on some financial things with tax, with tax protests when I get to my report later. And then we did have one resignation, Amanda Spinet. And she is resigning her position, social studies teacher, and she's been our good softball coach, assistant basketball coach for the last five years. I included a copy of that letter for all of you. In short, she would just like to thank everybody at Cherokee Public Schools for the support and opportunity she's been provided during the last five years. She's enjoyed her time as a chief and grateful for the encouragement that we have given her in pursuit of her professional and personal growth. That is everything, A through F.
Any other further discussion, B through F? Questions, concerns? If not, do I have a motion to approve A through F?
I have a motion to approve A through F.
Desiree's made a motion to approve A through F. Do I have a second?
I'll think.
Curtis, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Number five, principals' reports.
State testing started April 20th. Right now, third and fourth are completely finished, and fifth grade is wrapping up ELA this week. Fifth and sixth grade regular track seizing came to an end on the 27th. May 2nd, we had the music program scheduled, but was canceled due to weather, unfortunately. We all rushed home that day, making sure we were safe, and then nothing happened. The Jesse Mary Reinhardt was a success. That track meet was on May 3rd, went really well. The concession stand did well, which was a fundraiser for the elementary school. Today, we celebrated those students who met their fourth nine weeks AR goal, which is the popsicle and extra recess celebration today. Wednesday, we will take a field trip to Rialto. We have 119 students who met their AR goal all four nine weeks, so that's pretty impressive. So we're gonna go to Rialto to celebrate those students and watch a movie. On the 12th, Touch of Community will be at the elementary. Currently, we have lots of field trips going on. We're doing something new this year called Super Kids Day, which will be on the 16th, which is, is just gonna be a fun day for students to come and, um, play and get onto bouncy houses. And we have some parents who have volunteered to host some games out there, so it's just gonna be a fun day to, um, celebrate the end of the year. On the 18th, it's a half-day of school, and we will have our awards assembly at 10 o'clock. And the last day will be the 19th. And, um, other than that, we're just getting ready for summer school, which will start June 6th and end June 30th. Out at the elementary.
Uh, for the high school, FFA, 10th State FFA Convention, they left tonight. We actually made them come back and stay in the gym for a while because of all the weather, and then I think they followed it over there. While they were, before they were there, Brent Fills was second state in diversified agricultural production. They were also recognized as a chapter that donated to the Hunger Challenge and the chapter, and the chapter trust for FFA Foundation. The FFA banquet is tomorrow night, 6:30 Fairgrounds. You should have all received your invitations. Didn't, I'm just kidding. We did host a regional track meet on April 30th. I'd like to thank everybody that helped with that. I missed part of it, I had to, I had another commitment, but I got back about three from, I did a lot of them. So, uh, thank you everybody that helped with that. It takes a lot of help to hit that. Mr. Shawnbacher's got it down to a science, so, or an art, so he ran off really well. The Lady Chiefs were regional runner-up, so that was good. Several students, athletes qualified for state track meet last weekend. There's a list of the boys and the girls that qualified in their respective events, and several medaled to the medal stand, which is huge. The, uh, boys 300, or were third in the 800 relay, and that was Kyle, Lakin, Nick, and Zach, and then Nick medaled in the 110 high hurdles. And then for the Lady Chiefs, Kinley Cole was a state champion shot putter. Uh, she also won fourth in the disc. Riley Hensley was fourth in the 400. They were fifth in the two-mile relay, and they were sixth in the mile relay. And Chesney Mary made the finals in the 100 hurdles, but didn't quite make it, so... The sports banquet is this Thursday, May 12th. I believe the meal's at 5:30 in the banquet's afterwards. State speech. Last time we talked about regional speech, this time I talked about state speech. Mr. Paris was the NFHS OSSAA Oklahoma Coach of the Year, so that's huge. He said it was just his turn. He said they rotate that, and it was his turn, so he would take it this time. They were state runner-up. The individual champions and runners-up are all listed here. Several state champions, Gabe White was a state champion in humorous interpretation, dramatic interpretation. Gabe White also, he was a three-time state champ. I think that's the most you can do while you're there, is three state championships. So, uh, he also won a state championship with Josie Shelton in dramatic duets. Josie Shelton, Xander Jackson were state champions, champions in humorous duet. Avery Sanborn and Aaron Tidwell were state runner-up in the humorous duet. And then we had three other state finalists. Uh, FCCLA had 15 students qualified to attend the national FCCLA convention. There are seven that are actually going to be attending, and I believe that's the first week in, last week of June or first week of July. Some, some written there. So, um, Hope Jordan was named the Oklahoma FCCL, FCCLA North One District President, so that's pretty cool. Mac Gloria will be Wednesday, May 18th. I believe the meal's at 6:00 and the services at 7:00. Eighth grade grad, uh, senior awards and junior high, high school awards assembly will be Thursday, May 19th at 9:30 in the morning. Eighth grade graduation will be that night at 7:00. And then high school graduation is May 20th, Friday, May 20th, at 7:00. So, I'm sure I left something off, but this is all I can remember.
Thanks, Chris. Number six, discussion and vote to approve or disapprove a resolution for schools and libraries. Universal Services ERig for the '22-'23. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 application for the funding year '22-'23 and the payment of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and receiving services.
This is just kind of a every-year kind of housekeeping thing. In order for us to file that Form 471, we do have to pass this resolution. Erate is based on our free and reduced numbers, and so it's assistance with internet and things like that. So when we send those forms out every year, for free and reduced, it's important... out every year, free and reduced, it's important that we get all those back and that those are as accurate as possible for other things besides child nutrition. And this is one of them. Our total share that we would get for twenty-two, twenty-three is about eighty-nine hundred dollars. And so every little bit helps in that way. This item on that agenda is just so that we can fill out those forms, get them submitted for next year. Questions? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Desiree, second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve contracts for the following vendors. OKTLE, alcohol and drug testing, Today's Therapy Solutions. I just want to ahead and put all those on there together. OKTLE is the evaluation tool that we use to evaluate teachers. That's a contract that we sign with OKTLE each year. It's approximately twelve hundred dollars a year for us to use that. It is part of our accreditation that we, we have a tool in place. And OKTLE is the most commonly used evaluation tool. We've used this for several years. And so this is just, this is our contract there with them to use that. Alcohol and drug testing is a company that we've used for several years. Drug testing on our bus drivers and random student drug tests, all those that we, that we do throughout the year. And then Today's Therapy Solutions, that's a service that we've used. I'm not sure how many years, but I think it's been several that we've used them. So we do a lot of physical therapy services. I might say it's just a little bit of time to put all those. Those contracts just on a twelve-month deal with the? Yeah, they, they come out every, every year. Any other questions, concerns?
I'm making a motion to approve OKTLE, alcohol and drug testing, Today's Therapy.
Desiree's made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Curtis, second.
Shane, second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number eight, proposed executive session for the board to discuss personnel and employment items to include contracts and salaries for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three pursuant to S twenty-five through oh seven D one. Make a motion? Curtis, second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Six thirty. I'm going to make a motion to return back to open session. Second?
All second.
Thank you. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Seven fifteen.
During the executive session, the board discussed personnel and employment items to include contracts and salaries for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Number nine, discussion and vote to employ or not to employ Riley Reeger, Natalie Bach McLennan, and Mike Roberts for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Our application will be to hire Riley Reeger, who served as a fourth grade teacher, Natalie Bach, as a kindergarten teacher, and Mike Roberts as a stewardess. Can I make a motion to employ Riley, Natalie, and Mike? Do I have a second?
All second.
Curtis, second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number ten, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve contracts for the following individuals. Carol Robertson, Alicia Bigart, and Shanna Rhine for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Carol and Alicia are serving as LPCs right now. They, they are here two days a week each. And so their contracts would be to continue those services for another year for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. They see several students while they're here. Do a really good job with them and taking care of our students in that regard. Shanna Rhine is our speech pathologist, and this contract covers a list of her responsibilities for that and meeting all those expectations. So this contract would be for her to serve as our school speech pathologist for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I would recommend that we renew all, all three of those contracts. I make a motion to approve the contracts for Carol, Alicia, and Shanna.
All second.
Desiree, second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number eleven on the back, discussion and vote to approve the district's transfer Laws in schools, this is something that we will have to do regularly. We had set our limits in January and through April, where really we were not taking any transfers at that time. Going through our grade levels with our principals and knowing what we can handle, what we could handle up to, I would like to recommend that we increase our capacity numbers at this point throughout the summer. If we have any students that wish to transfer in, or the process, they go through it in the office, going up to paperwork, and then we take those into consideration. Any student that lives in district or moves into district, obviously we have to take them, so that affects the amount of room we have. Should have two pieces of paper for that. One would show you the recommended, or what I'm recommending that we increase our capacity to. And that starts with preschool with twenty and then all the way down to, or up to grade twelve. Most of our classes, we can handle forty kids. We have two teachers each. You'll notice grade eight and grade eleven and grade five, those are lower. Those, those classes are, well, they're already a little bit smaller. And so for their core classes with the juniors and the eighth graders, we don't have the ability to split those classes. And so really, those capacity numbers are what we can handle in one classroom with that class. So those are going to have to be lowered. The other classes, most of their classes, whether, you know, core classes, depending on schedule, whether it be English class, math class, we can split some of those so we can handle more kids at those grade levels. The other piece of paper that I gave you kind of shows what that looks like as far as how many transfers possibly, you know, we can take. Again, that's not going to be just an exact number because we may not know who they may have been over the summer and that will affect it. And we'll go through that process when we do. But we do feel like at this time we can increase our capacity members and we can start looking at some transfers that might want to come in. Just for that policy for transfers, we do go back, we look at discipline, we look at attendance, and there are factors that will determine whether or not we, we take them or not. If we have a room and they're in good standing basically, then we'll have to take them. Any other questions on the transfer capacity?
Making a motion to approve the district's transfer capacity.
Desiree's made a motion. Shane, second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Just making sure you got plenty of tricks. Number twelve, superintendent's report. The principal's covered quite a bit of it. It's a busy time of the year. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. We had people from community bringing food in to the teachers. I saw some flowers being delivered some of the teachers, and so that was very much appreciated. Of course, we do appreciate our teachers very much for all that they do. Couple things that we're looking at. I've requested some quotes on updating our security cameras in this building. We have some areas that are, that are blind spots that we have had coverage in. And the system that we've had in place is getting older. It's not very reliable. We've already, we have this type of system in the elementary already. And so this would kind of tie everything together. So we're going to be looking at that and possibly being able to do that over the summer when nobody's here, because they would have to get in and run wires and do all that. But it would, it would put cameras in our auditorium and cafeteria, even out back in that alley, just give us better overall coverage. And right now, we would be able to utilize some of those federal dollars to do that. That's, that's one of the expenses that does qualify for that. So that's something we're looking into right now. We're going to be sending three of our special education teachers to Alva this summer. There is a, a training that they're putting on, and they've included some area schools. So our three special education teachers, Charity Van Meter, Rita Hall, and Michael Plapp. They'll be going over last part of June. It's a training that's put on by the Oklahoma Autism Center. And they're trying to get that established in Alva as a yearly training, something that can be built on year after year. So we're hoping that these teachers over here this year and the next year, we'll send some other personnel over there and take part in that. So I think that'll be very beneficial for Those are graduations are coming up, eighth grade and high school graduations, wrapping up the end of the year. Some bad news, and I hate to end on some bad news, but going back to what I spoke of in the treasurer's report I did meet with our assessor, county assessor Jennifer Roach and one of our commissioners Jay Haye last week to discuss past tax protest and some future tax protest. The BCE mock protest that had been going on since two thousand seventeen, we lost that. So we really won't be getting any of that money. Pretty unfortunate, it's not money that we've planned on. We kind of wrote it off. So it's not going to take away necessarily from anything, but it's certainly not going to add to it now. That and then what that may do to our valuation, there's still a couple of factors there that are kind of getting worked out. But right now, this past year, our net assessed value was right at thirty-two million. And so with this protest being settled and then with additional protests that are expected to happen this next year, our valuation is actually going to stay about where it was this past year. So, I mean, there is a little silver lining there. We actually have some consistency from one year to the next, but it's just not going back up like we had hoped it would. There's probably going to be, according to her, could be an additional two million dollars with various companies that may protest. So those things are still going on. I don't see huge amounts, like we did before, that are going to cause big, big swings in our valuation, which means, you know, huge amounts that we wouldn't get. But it seems like there's just a lot of little ones. And those are still adding up. So, you know, they're not going away. I think it's just something we're going to have to learn to kind of navigate. I know there was some legislation that was proposed, but it sounds like most of it was kind of shot down and really didn't go anywhere. But I think that it, it is definitely a big enough issue now, and it's getting to that state level that there, there will still be, there'll be some legislation, you know, come up next year. I think that we'll try to address it and try to alleviate some of this for us and some of the problems that it's causing. But as I said, right now, what I took away from that is we're not getting any more money. You know, we were hoping that would happen and it didn't. And our valuation looks like it's going to at least level off, and we should be about where we are next year with this year's elections. So a little bit of consistency is not terrible either. That's good. But both of them, both Jennifer and Jay were, they've been dealing with this a long time. And so I appreciate their input on that, give me the numbers and keep me up to date with those things. So other than that, we're really going to end on, on bad news, but that's where we're at with it. Very, very busy time of the year. We've got things going on crazy, and everybody's trying to do it with a smile on their face. We're just out there. Thanks, Bryce. Number thirteen, any new business? First, no business. Number fourteen, make a motion to adjourn. I have a second. Desiree, second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.